Under commission meeting to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Henderson will lead us in the pledge.
I would bow with us. I want to do the Lord, we come together again tonight, we thank you so much for another wonderful day in Columbia County, we thank you for the little bit of rain we got today, we sure use it. I ask that you look over our country and give us healing, us peace, so much time of trouble and one American pitted against another American, find us a way to come together, bring us back to our normal. We ask that you look over our proceedings tonight and guide us to help us to make the best decisions for this community and for our neighbors, in Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge.
Public. Let's thank you. If I could remind you to please silence your cell phones. We do have all five commissioners present tonight for a 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to look over the minutes from the May 21st meeting. If you notice anything that needs to be amended, please state it now for the record or I need a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes from 5:21:20, pass 5:0. Gentlemen, you've also had a chance to look over tonight's agenda. If there are no amendments or additions, I need a motion for approval.
Do I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5:0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on June 16th, 2020 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden and she'll give you a request to speak for them. We're less formal in these meetings tonight. If you have something that you'd like to comment on either for or against, or if you have a comment you want to make on something that's not on our agenda in the public comments section, please come, raise your hand and I'll invite you forward to the microphone and give you a couple of minutes to give us your take on whatever issue you'd like to discuss. I do see we have two qualified candidates for the Commission Two race tonight. Mr. Bob Willis, if you'd like to give us a word or two. All right. Thank you, sir. And I see Mr. Don Skinner, same thing, if you'd like to give us a... Okay, gentlemen, I appreciate you being here tonight and I appreciate your involvement in the campaigns and that you've run honorable campaigns and that you both are offering yourself up for service. With that being said, we will move on to our first issue presented as information only. And Mr. Butler, file MW200501.
Thank you. This is a minor waiver, it was approved back in May, 3342 Log Deck Way, currently zoned and planning in development. Shows the location of the property over in the Gateway side of the county, currently zoned and planning in development. And air view of the site, it's undeveloped, obviously. To the request, this is a new hotel, sleep-in. This piece here is an overhang that goes into the setback, the reduction in the front setback raises it down to 49 feet, six inches, within a 10% threshold, that's permitted by that. That is it.
Right, thank you, sir. We've got several items that are presented as information only. Ms. Boltie, file MW200601. And with that being said, since we've got some folks that I haven't seen in here before, Mr. Sterling, could you kind of define what staff can approve and why we're seeing this as information only tonight? All right, Danielle, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. The information-only items we're seeing tonight are the minor waivers, which are reductions in building setback requirements less than 10%, and the temporary use authorization, which can be approved by staff for commercial or sales offices, correction trailers, things like that. Those are all staff-level approvals that are presented to you for information, so you're aware of what's going on.
Thank you, ma'am. If you'd tell us about file 01 here.
Yes, sir. This is a minor waiver at 229 Maywood Drive. This is a residential property, it's zoned R3, single-family residential. This was a reduction of the front setback that was approved May 15th, and this is related to the variance request you'll see later tonight that is a request to withdraw. This is the plat of the property. You can see the plat was submitted with a 25-foot minimum building line marked. Due to the right-of-way being 60 feet in this location, it's actually a 20-foot minimum building line from the right-of-way that did push the requested reduction in the setback under the 10% threshold, so it was a minor waiver and was approved by staff back in May.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Butler, temporary use authorization, tax map 029, parcel 030.
Thank you. This is a T U A, it was approved back in May. This is over, you guys actually looked at two weeks ago, the Greenpoint Development. This is one of those parcels, there was a condition that was added on to that that looked a little odd, and actually dealt with this request. This request is for a temporary batch plant for the Amazon project on a 5.2-acre portion of this property. This is the location of the parcel, and the zoning of it, again, is now zoned PRD, or PUD, excuse me, at the time it was zoned M1 RA. Air view of the site. And the site plan itself, this shows the batch plant would be right here, and then the aggregate storage, et cetera, for that. One of the things with this, they can have this for a year, they can also come back and ask for an extension. They'll likely be asking for an extension because this batch plant will be there for probably 18 months. That is all on this one.
Right, thanks, sir. Ms. Boltie, another temporary use authorization, tax map 077 Charlie, parcel 046.
Yes, sir. This is a temporary outdoor dining area at 3843 Washington Road. It's C2 general commercial property located in Martinez on the north side of Washington Road, and this is an existing restaurant. And they are, in response to the social distancing requirements, they were proposing puddings at a couple of tables under some tents outside temporarily to allow them some additional dining and serving space. This was approved with some conditions back in May, on May 7th, that they not block access to the handicap spaces, that the hours of operation matched those of the restaurant. And a clarification on the timeline, typically we do see these temporary use authorizations run for a year. In this case, reasoning behind it, the approval runs until the social distancing orders are lifted, and then everything has to be removed within the three days.
Thank you, ma'am. And our last information only, Ms. Mystery. Tax map 072 Alpha, parcel 190.
Yes, sir. This is a location, 4272 Washington Road, current zoning is C2, the existing use is a restaurant known as Laziza. This is the location, which is a public shopping center. And the lean-to shed is going in that bottom corner there, which is actually ideal because there's a lot of landscaping there, too. Six by 10-foot lean-to shed, and the restaurant is requesting this as part of the executive order, that they need the extra space for storage of paper goods for health and safety of the visitors. And it was approved with conditions on May 20th.
Thank you, ma'am. Did they happen to say, they seem to be doing well on that end cap. Finally, we've got somebody in there that looks like they're going to be able to make it. Did they have any comment about how well they're doing?
Been there for a while, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Boltie, conceptual plan for Kingsbrook.
Yes, sir. This is a concept plan for a new large lot subdivision off Rosemont Road and Berks Mountain Road. It's 11 lots currently zoned RA residential agriculture. This is the location of the property, on the east side of Rosemont Road, south side of Berks Mountain Road. These properties were previously subdivided, with the exception of this one, this was a pre-existing lot, but the other parcels were subdivided from the parent tract back in 2018 with Planning Commission approval. They're currently accessed by a collection of easements to keep the four lots or less being accessed off an easement. This concept plan basically redoes this lot layout. So this is the aerial of the site, again, largely undeveloped, they do have the first two houses up here on Rosemont Road. And this is the new concept plan, so the proposal is to construct a new road into the site to provide access to the lots. This is instead of the current easement configuration. This one lot has access directly off of Rosemont Road through its little flagpole section, the remainder of the lots accessed from the new road. You can see the road is stubbed out to the property line, will likely see an additional phase in the near future for the remainder of the property. The smallest lot proposed in this plan is over three acres, so it meets the requirements of the RA zoning district, which requires at least two and a half acres. These lots are all on well and septic systems, there are no utilities out here in this area of the county. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions to staff? I do see Mr. Ivey here, would you mind coming up and answering a question or two? These other gentlemen, this is not a public hearing, but since you're here. I noticed the last conceptual you had, you had some folks that were going to have their driveways dump out onto Berks Mountain. You're going to change that and have everybody on the internal artery here?
Everybody comes off the internal. There is one existing drive right here that will remain. It's already in place, it's there. You've got a low area coming right through here that kind of cuts off, I think these houses will be built kind of in these areas right here, and I really don't see, they're not going to come across that wetland area. You know, somebody may say, hey, I need a little shop back there or something, but it's going to be very little.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, any questions?
Getting a lot of interest in that area, Mark.
Yes, sir. I've probably got a list of, I don't know, probably almost 20 people now. You don't know how many of them will convert to contracts, but they've expressed an interest. Some of them, the lots are going to be too expensive for them, others maybe are not ready, but I've got, I've got a couple that are chomping at the bit right now. We had hoped to already be started with all the coronavirus stuff, it kind of pushed everything, and I could have been on the last meeting agenda, but that meeting agenda was pretty full.
Come on now.
I figured I might want to wait a couple of weeks and be here versus at that one.
Thanks for waiting.
But we're already working on engineering and hopefully our engineer will turn those plans in next week or the week after, and hopefully we can get started out there fairly quick and get some lots put on the ground and get some nice houses going.
Now, are you all going to do all the building there? Is this going to be yours?
We'll do any of the building. It's just not what we do anymore, we just don't do those custom houses anymore, we don't have the staff to do them, nor the time with everything else we have going. My house is right here, so I built my house and the Wiley's house, which is here, and then Wayne Bridge's house, which is there. We built those three out there, and I don't, you know, unless somebody from church or a family member says, hey, will you please, please build, I don't see us building.
Okay, great. Gentlemen, any other questions?
They coming on with that house on the hill they house up.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you, sir. Gentlemen, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve H2C1 conceptual plan for Kingsbrook.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5:0. Ms. Mystery, you've got an architectural review for SA Limited LLC.
Yes, sir. This is the location at 427 Lewiston Road, and zoning is C2. This is the Kroger shopping area, and it's one of the lots on the fronting Lewiston Road, it's next to Panera. This is the site plan that is approved for this location. And these are the elevations that were in for building permitting. It is basically a tenanted shopping center, and there's, on the elevations, there's a stone base with columns, stucco storefront. And there were some discussions with architects during the process to the mechanical units onto the ground area of the roof, just to improve the elevations, and they went ahead and did that. And we actually have the sample board for you over there, if you wanted to see it, and a picture of it as well. This is the elevation, and I've just included another building in the Gateway area, it's similar to that, it's not the same, it just gives you an impression of what the finished product could look like. And this is a sample board with the stucco color, which selected as Dover Sky, and the stone, which is Bucks County Southern L-edged stone, and staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Okay, we'll need a motion to approve, deny or to tables, this is not a public hearing.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition the architectural review for 427 Lewiston Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Dr. Snelling, yes, sir. Okay, yes, sir. I didn't realize that was yours. Please give us your name and home address, we know you.
George Snelling, 610 Braburn Drive, Martinez, Georgia. Nana here is in all this stuff. Number one on this whole thing, I'm not under, did not understand why it is I'm here. Why do I have to get a special provision under something for me just to decide how the building looks? I thought that was just part of the regular approval process.
Is it the rear of the building's facing the front retail location, and we wanted to make sure it was consistent all the way around the building?
Which makes no sense at all. But anyway, so we've kind of been back and forth on some of this stuff, and I just noticed Nana here wanted us to get up a sample board, which we did, but she has selected the color of the finish and the stone, and I don't understand why it is you get to select that.
I mean, I've never had the county to select. I have built.
Yes, sir. We had the architects submit the elevations on the samples to us, and most of the time the architects are making the selections for the materials. With this one, we actually got two options for the stucco and the stone. And as we reviewed it in the office as a staff, we all looked at it and considering what's out there with the Kroger, the Panera, other buildings, out of these options, we thought these two matched that area well.
So that matches the existing architecture more closely than the other combination?
Yes, sir. That was just our staff review of it, yes.
All right, thank you.
I just don't understand why it is the staff can pick the color of your stucco and stone. I mean, I could say, here's a range, here's a board with, you know, 10 colors, here's this, here's that, but they're actually selecting the color for an owner that's actually paying, believe it or not, to build the building. So to me, and that may be the rules, but I must say, I think it's totally wrong in a Republican county that you've got staff getting down to that miniscule of a thing related to the finish of your building.
Why the architect submit two choices?
Well, we weren't going to submit any, because they request, the staff requested that we submit some stuff. Of course, I got a bunch of buildings out there, as y'all know, but, and we just got, and I don't particularly mind this color, I mean, we submitted it, but I just don't think it's right for the staff to come in and say, well, you've got to do this, this and this. I mean, wow, I mean, where, where are we in the freedom of action as far as using your own property rights? You know, I'm just, you know, so that's, y'all can, I hope you vote for it, but I mean, I just think that's true.
Does it, does it help the value of your, of your property to make sure that you have a consistent look throughout the entire development?
The look is, the look is so varied in this particular development. Once you go to the Dairy Queen, once you go to Panera, the Kroger, the look is so varied, you could probably have a selection of 20 different types of stone, stucco and whatever. It's not like it's some homogeneous mix, you know? And I'm just, I'm just making the same, if it were, everybody had to have the same stone, the same color, I mean, if that's what you want to do, if that's in the POA documents, I understand that, but just arbitrarily, you know, come along, when you've probably got at least 10 stucco shades in the area and just say, well, here's what, I just think it's, as a county policy, it's wrong, but that's just my opinion.
Does Southeast still own that development, or have they sold that off?
Well, actually, everything has, Kroger owns their own building.
Right.
Okay, and so Southeast built it, I bought the lot from Vic, and everything has to go through the approval process of Kroger. So this had to go through Kroger, the architectural, the site plan, the whole nine yards, they approved it. They didn't require any particular stucco coloring or anything like that, so it's really, I thought it was just going to be internally approved by Kroger, who is, who owns their own store and actually is in charge of any kind of POA development, they have to just approve anything. So it just, it came as a bit of a shock when the county kind of came in and got involved in it. Now, I mean, it's not a big deal, but I, you know, I think that in a Republican county, we need to have as much latitude for the property owner to select, you know, his own finishes. That's just my silly, my old, old age opinion, as it, as it turns out. Anyway, so I'll shut up.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? Okay, motion's been made to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5:0. Ms. Boltie, we have two provisional home occupations, the first is for Starling Camp Canine.
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation at 5329 Lynder McCurdy Road. It's almost 22 acres, zoned RA residential agriculture. This is the location of the property, out kind of east of Pollard's Corner towards the lake, on the north side of Lynder McCurdy Road. And this is the aerial of the site, you can see the house and existing barn and arena facilities and other buildings pushed to the back of the property. This is the core property to the north, that obviously will remain undeveloped property. And the applicant is proposing to use a 12-by-24 building on the, that already exists on the property with the fenced yards for a small dog boarding and grooming business. The way they have proposed the operation is that they would provide pickup and drop-off services for their clients, so there would not be necessarily client traffic to this site, rather the business owners would run a shuttle to go pick up the dogs from their owners and then drop them back off. They proposed five or six dogs, we did want to clarify that anything over five dogs is a kennel by county definition, and kennels are not allowed in residential areas, that's not something we can change with the provisional home occupation, that would require a commercial location or rezoning. So staff is recommending approval with the condition that there be no more than five dogs on the property at any one time.
Thank you. Is the applicant here this evening? Okay, well, this is not a public hearing, I saw some of the commissioners might have a question. Gentlemen, this is not a public hearing, so we need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition the provisional home occupation for Starling's Camp Canine.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5:0. Ms. Boltie, provisional home occupation for the Winkler Farm.
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation at 6670 Washington Road. 5.84 acres currently zoned R4 recreational residential, and the applicant is proposing a hobby farm operation that will result in the sales of eggs and frozen meat from the property. This is the location of the site on the west side of Washington Road, again, currently zoned R4. There is some commercial zoning around it, but all of the residential properties are also R4. Small-scale agriculture is a limited use in this district, limited production of crops, livestock, poultry, et cetera, typically for individual or family use. This district does not allow poultry houses, dairies, ranges, feedlots, things like that that would be large-scale commercial operations. This is the aerial of the site, existing house on the property. And the proposal is to have five chicken coops on the site, the applicant has indicated they currently have, I think it was around 60 chickens, there'd be a maximum of 75 on the site, with the coops sent around the house as shown, and they run about eight cattle on this site, as you saw from the aerial, and you can see here, it is mostly pasture. In staff's opinion, the pasturing of the cattle is not a feedlot in a strict definition. Feedlots typically are confined operations where they're feeding the animal something other than grass, getting main nutrition from grain or other provided feeds. Pasturing of the cattle, we feel, is less of a concern and is not what's being targeted by the code as a feedlot and as a prohibited use in this location. On the chicken side, we did talk about this back in February, how we go about regulating these kind of small-scale agricultural businesses on these properties, where the agriculture operations aren't allowed by right. We talked about several ways to do that. What we did in February was come down on using kind of the percentage of the property, similar in, similar in nature to how we regulate home occupations in general, where they're allowed to use a specific portion of the house. That's 20% in the code, if you're running a home business, said small-scale agriculture, seemed like you could use 20% of the property as a reasonable line. The five chicken coops are well under that, and as noted, the cattle not being considered a feedlot operation per se, we wouldn't consider to be subject to that limit. The business operations would consist of occasional sales of eggs beyond what the applicants could eat themselves. The cattle are not butchered on site, they're taken off-site for processing and then brought back here, the meat is stored in a freezer, and the applicant has a mobile meat license to sell the meat off-site, and occasionally someone may come to the house to pick up their, their order. Most of the lots in this area are large, larger acreage-type lots that lend themselves to these types of uses. The applicant is responsible for complying with any covenants or deed restrictions on the property, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? So why the rule for the six chickens per acre?
So that is, it's six chickens on any property less than an acre, since we allow small-scale agriculture in all of our residential districts, you could potentially have a quarter acre or smaller property where they wanted to have hobby chickens for fun, for eggs, for whatever purpose, and that would limit them to no more than six chickens on a property.
This rule and vision-making don't correspond?
Right, so that was, one of the options that was laid out in the staff report was, the code does set a limit of six chickens for anything smaller than an acre. You could extend that and say, you know, six chickens per acre in general, but we do have some concerns with, with that, that's up to you, that's another valid way to move forward. If, if six chickens an acre seems like the reasonable number for a small-scale agriculture, the chickens honestly don't take that much space, and said, I mean, if a quarter acre property could also have six chickens, it does raise the question of how you, how you draw that line.
I've never owned a chicken coop. How many chickens, small-scale chickens?
I'm going to let you answer that one.
You can put a ton of them.
I've never owned chickens either, but...
My wife's got a chicken coop.
I have.
A bunch?
But, yeah. A bunch, you'd be surprised, it's a couple, you know, one or two square feet per chicken. You could get a lot.
An area this size, a place just like this.
My wife's got a chicken coop that's probably 20 by 20, and I think they've had as many as 35 in there, plus turkeys. They get along fine.
The meat HOA and zoning requirements are...
This is on, this is on Rick's property, so they would, they would throw me out of the subdivision.
Thanks for...
Thank you, ma'am. And I know this is not a public hearing, but I see the applicant in the back, is there anything he'd like to come forward and add to this for the gentleman here? That seem to be ignorant about chickens?
Chicken ignorance is common. Can't reach the mic, but can you guys hear?
You can pull it down.
Make a noise. No, I do this as a hobby farm, yeah. Sure, a lot of you guys know who I really am. Angel in Iraq, Amadou, two-time Paralympian, quad for the country, one for the country. Now I just find something else to do. I also coach track and field, five years at Grove Town, two years at Harlem Middle, first year at the high school, didn't get a virus, but back again. It's just something extra for me to do. Actually, the eggs are good. My brother-in-law has eggs right next door, and I didn't like his eggs. They were rubbery, they were barred rock chickens, and I got white Leghorns and Isa Browns and Eggers. Pretty cute, that's the wife's pet. But we don't eat them, egg layers, so. There's too many, you know, chickens lay an egg a day, some don't, some do. I get made fun of because I treat my chickens with extra stuff. Friends do. Well, why you do that? Well, they're giving us eggs, so why not treat them, so, got too many, so we sell them. Then I got into the beef. Can't touch them. Wife has her two favorites. You don't eat names, so those are going to stay. But for me, it's actually healthy for me. My cholesterol's dropping, I'm actually feeling better, and, you know, that's the whole purpose, and it's, I got too much of it, you know.
Do you sell, do you sell it on the, on the road? Do you send it somewhere?
So...
How does it work?
The cows, part of it?
The chick, the...
The chickens, the chickens. I have a candling license, so anything in Georgia, you have to have a license for. So, me and the wife got our cannon license, that was a fun thing. Would not know what is any eggs. So, what we'll do is we can sell them from the house or sell them anywhere. Now, with the mobile meat license, I can take them with me, along with the freezers. So the freezers are on the trucks, order goes out, boom, you're gone. Hey, you got eggs? We see you got chickens. Yes, we do. It's three dollars a dozen. Yeah, I'm not trying to get rich, I'm just...
In for feed.
Yeah, thirteen dollars a bag is chicken food.
Something to keep you busy.
It, it is, and besides hunting and fishing and outdoors and stuff. Just another step stone. Hey, uh, what have you accomplished in your lifestyle? I'm not no great farmer, but I'm learning as I go. Everybody gotta learn something new.
Great, gentlemen, any other questions?
He can shoot a high-powered rifle good, too.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. All right, gentlemen, if there's no more questions, I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve H. two E. two provisional home occupation for the Winkler Farm.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero.
All right, Mr. Butler, we've got a plan, a minor S-one plan revision, file RZ two zero zero six zero one.
That we do, this one's really minor, too. Our location's forty-nine twenty-one Columbia Road, forty-four point four seven acres, currently zoned S-one special. Our revision is to relocate parking and rotate the building. This is out at, uh, Saint Teresa's Catholic Church. This is the location of the property on the north side of Columbia Road, adjacent to Amherst Division and Tyler Woods. Uh, most everything around it is zoned, plenty of development on the north, east, and west side. Across the street is zoned R-one, residential. Aerial view of the site and the existing site, flat. So currently, the site plan for this, uh, this, uh, the church itself, uh, this building is really what we're looking at, and the parking lot. All they're doing is taking it and rotating it, as we can see here. They're connecting it to, um, I can't remember what kinda building this is, but they're, they're connecting it to this building here with a breezeway and moving the parking around. Uh, staff recommends approval of the request. In terms of future land use, it is within, it was carrot area, uh, that does a lot of churches, so it fits within that, that character perfectly. Any questions on the recommendation of approval?
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. This is not a public hearing, so we'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ twenty dash zero six dash one.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? To approve carries five zero.
Mr. Butler, file RZ two zero zero six zero two.
I'm just requesting rezoning from C-two to S-one over at Rose Court and Rose Lane and Rose Street. Uh, currently it's undeveloped and also being used for some residential uses. Request is rezoned to S-one for proposed self-storage facility. This is the location of the property, again, south side of Rose Street, kinda over in the Bobby Jones area, uh, you're kinda near the, the Lowe's to the north and Walmart to the south. And again, everything around it is zoned C-two. Aerial view of the site itself. Existing site has been cleared, we won't say it's been logged or anything. Um, there is some penalties to that they'll be facing when they go, go to actually develop the site. And again, this shows the existing site from, uh, the, the Walmart side of the development and the plat of all the properties. Or actually, all of them, one extra. In terms of the concept, so you guys did see this back in January, uh, similar request, uh, the office was over here before. Uh, what you have, though, is a hundred, about a hundred and ninety thousand square feet of self-storage, both, uh, traditional and also, uh, climate-controlled. You do have an office here, again, that's moved from the north side, and the sixty-foot clock tower, that was before a hundred and twenty-five feet, uh, there was some issue with that from staff, they revised their request, uh, to kinda take that into account. Uh, you do have, uh, privacy fences around the site, um, you can kinda, them here, and in these areas around it. Whoops. That's not middle building, see? Uh, building E would be a kind of a two, a two-level building. Uh, this shows kinda what they proposed with it, uh, from their narrative. They did change it a little bit with, uh, having metal on the south side, um, and that's one of our conditions we'll be discussing here in a moment. Um, also metal in the interior. Well, there is stucco on the road street side, um, that we saw in the, in the previous, uh, photo. There's a privacy wall, this shows what it was before, but also shows you the fence that they proposed here, and the, again, previous tower is no longer a hundred and twenty-five feet high. So in terms of, of future land uses with the Martiness Activity Center, uh, this has already been approved for, they initially want to use for storage, they could actually do storage on, I believe, four acres of the site already, really adding the extra two onto it to bring it, you know, for, for a fully planned development. Uh, in terms of what staff has issues with, um, we do with the, the metal on the exterior of the buildings, uh, we are not in favor of that, we have a condition that, um, addresses that, and also changing from a, a fence along Rose Street into a, a privacy wall, as, as mentioned before. And again, kinda clarifying with the privacy fence, um, that it will be, will be wrought iron. Again, they show the conditions here, uh, metal is not permitted on the exterior wall facing any adjacent parcel of road, and the exterior walls will be faced with stucco and stone, and we'll see the elevations come back before you, um, kinda like what we saw earlier with, um, with Dr. Snelling. And again, substantially comply with the provided photos and narrative, that does not mean they're gonna look exactly like it, but again, looks similar, uh, in nature. Again, staff doesn't recommend approval with conditions. Any questions?
Mr. Butler, you, you kinda slid through something that, that got my attention. You mentioned that, uh, the lot had been cleared. You insinuated that it had been logged, if it's been logged.
No, it has not been logged.
And not been logged.
But here, here's the thing, if you log this property, you can't develop it for three years.
Right.
So this has not reached that point, they went in and under, cleared underbrush, didn't really disturb the ground, it's not, in our opinion, it hasn't met that requirement. So it is not to be...
How is that an opinion item and not some, why isn't there someone who's in charge of saying either is or is not logged?
They didn't file, they did not file a logging request or a logging permit, essentially. Um, it's really up to us to decide if this is or is not logging.
They didn't file a logging permit?
But you mentioned a penalty.
That doesn't mean, if somebody didn't get a permit, doesn't mean that they didn't do it.
Yeah, they went in and cleared out the underbrush.
Didn't need a land disturbance permit for that.
I needed an L D P for it.
But you mentioned a penalty.
No tree.
There's a penalty for it.
What?
They, they get double the penalty fee, the double the penal, double the fee, well, they'll have, have to be paid when they apply for that.
Cause...
Cause they did not, uh, they apparently did not get a, they actually didn't get, it's in there, it's in the staff report, I cannot remember what the issue is from, from stormwater.
It's a stormwater issue.
It is.
Have, have we seen any, uh, studies, anything done about the numbers of storage buildings we got versus population? We talked about it one time.
So we've seen the one, that was from a couple of months ago, um, that was debatable on what it's, if it was true or not, but we don't have anything that's, that lays out, here's what, how much storage we need to have.
Study that we received, very small area, very favorable to the person that was benefiting from the study, took the factors of their study and expanded it, just Evans doesn't play out, but it didn't include this area, which I think...
So we don't really know in density how we stand as the county is concerned.
Oh, we're over.
You know, the...
That's my opinion.
Again, it's all, that's all conjecture, I mean, it's one of those things, we don't have, they won't have any numbers to say yes or no on that.
In the conversations I've had over the years with Dr. Snelling that was up here, the formula he uses is very much like a grocery store. You look for the number of rooftops around a particular point on a map, and if it fits the formula, and I think his is twenty thousand.
The number was thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, but I think his, his was twenty, his magic number was twenty. So, uh, you know, again, with that factor, I, I don't know where we would be based on the concentration.
But in relation, the location that they're asking to do, fits that. Fits that better than some of the other places that I've seen. I'm still, I won't, you beat me to the question, I'm still hung up on this, if, if someone's gonna be fined, they did something wrong, and I gotta have more information on that.
It, it's on the bottom of the second page of the staff report, rezoning, and finishes up at the top of the third page.
It was cleared probably without a permit, that is the same if it's stormwater management. And again, it's, we don't have anything to find of what, if you clear a twelve-inch tree, fourteen is logging. It's all gonna be, you know, what is our opinion on it? Um, in our opinion, this has not reached that, that level. And could we say it does? Sure, we could say he cleared, he cleared the land, so therefore, three years.
Owner?
Cleared the grounds or he cleared the lake?
Is the sale subject to zoning?
So the engineer is here, if you want to ask any questions about what actually transpired.
Get the applicant.
Where trees fell?
Is the applicant here or the engineer here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address, see if you can clarify some of this for us.
Uh, name is Gary Bennett, uh, home address is five eight one zero Carriage Hills Drive in Martiness, and I'm the applicant's engineer. So, I was not aware that they cleared the site, this was new to me when I rode by the other day. I previously served as county staff in stormwater, so I'm kind of familiar with this. I looked at the site, they did not do any land disturbing activity, they just cleared trees, and that's kinda the, the, where you draw the line, is where we didn't pass anyway. So basically, it is undercut, brushed, took out scrub trees and kinda cleaned it up, and in preparations to develop it or to sell it, but there was no land disturbing activity that would have required a three-year moratorium. It got, got started a little early, it will be assessed to fine the, the double the land disturbing fee because of that, but outside of that, that's, that's the consequences of those actions.
Contradict, other things are said, fined for disturbing land.
He's being fined for not obtaining a grading permit or a clearing permit. He did not get the proper clearing permit to do this. So there's a clearing permit, then there's a grading and land disturbance permit, which are separate. So he's allowed to clear the land, but he has to get a permit prior to, to do that. He didn't do it.
So is this for site to other things that are not be permitted properly while he's building? And we get a, we get a ton of people, I've been on this board for five years or so now, a ton of people that come back in front of us that are saying, "Well, you know, I need a, I need a variance," or "I need, you know, I, I need an exception," or something like that, "because I didn't get a permit," or, or, "I got started early," or "went outside the lines," or what have you. We're, that's what we, we do, and so this guy hasn't even started building and he's already not getting permits. What, what's gonna happen down the road?
Well, like I said, I was not aware that he was doing this, I would've advised him not to, or got the clearing permit for him ahead of time. I don't think there will be an issue going forward, we will get the, the proper permits and go through the proper channels before anything else gets started going forward, uh, but, you know, as of now...
Well, how can we be sure?
Well, that's what, that's what enforcement's for.
That's what we got inspectors for, so we'll have to deal with that as we go. Is, uh, the, uh, the owner good with the conditions that we've got on this?
He is, the only one that he did have some, is some concern with, but I think we can live with it, is, uh, the, the stucco and stone, uh, facing two twenty-four and two forty-four Bobby Jones, which is the rear of the liquor store and the, uh, rear of the car wash. Uh, he just feels like that, that area is not gonna be visible, it's not gonna be anything that, uh, it's gonna be seen, it's just backing up to, uh, the back of another building. Uh, so instead of spending the cost there, I think he, we would rather see this cost being spent at the Rose Street with the wall and, and landscaping, as opposed to putting stucco on the back of something that nobody's ever gonna see.
Gentlemen, have any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate you coming out. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing to, uh, accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ two zero zero six zero two, from C-two to S-one for self-storage facility on Rose Street.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Ms. Mystery, file RZ two zero zero six zero three.
Thank you, sir, this is the location at forty-four fifty-nine Wrightsboro Road on nine point six acres, and the current zoning is R-one single-family residential and M-one light industrial, and the request is for M-one light industrial for the property. Here is the location, you can see it on the north side of Wrightsboro Road. Zoning map shows the R-one and the M-one section that's at the back of the property. Uh, there is, um, go back to that for a second. Um, S-one surrounding zoning is the mobile home park and the cemetery, um, there is a residential subdivision just behind it and a C-one, um, vacant property, um... This is the aerial of the site and the plat. These are a couple of site photographs, um, there is a vacant house, um, on the property and, um, a lot of, lot of woods. This is a street view from the west side, it shows the entrance to the mobile home park and the site that's under rezoning request, and you can see from the photo that it's kind of a residential scale, um, street there. So for the M-one, um, zoning request, the applicant wants to, um, subdivide it into, um, a center with office warehouse units, um, I guess for, they could do sale or lease, and, um, the, the concept plan shows approximately thirteen lots. Now, with some detailed engineering work, that could change a little bit, and you, you might lose a, a couple of those based on required buffers and setbacks. So in the future land use map, it is in the Interstate Activity Center, so this is, this use for M-one is suitable for this location, um, and with the variety of uses around there, it seems to, to fit that area. So the, uh, staff recommendation is to approve to M-one, uh, with, uh, two conditions. Number one, if the common entrance sign is provided, it shall be a monument-style sign of maximum eight feet high, and number two, the landscape strip along the frontage on Wrightsboro Road shall be designed by a landscape architect, include decorative landscape elements, and those are, both of those are done to keep that kinda residential feel of the street.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Hey, thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant here? Yes, Mr. Bennett, would you like to come back up and give us some additional information?
Pardon? Have any issues with the conditions? Answer your questions, you might have.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Hi, sir, I'm Michael Upbirds, me and my wife actually own the property off of Valley Brook Court at the back of this. Uh, we actually have a problem with this, 'cause we, one, the drainage for the sewer, uh, for the stormwater drainage would have to go into the back of our property, because there is a, uh, a, basically a sewage drain.
You can mark with your finger on, on, on your monitor there.
Basically, at the back of our property right here, sorry, I'm a veteran, but it's my hands shake because of this.
No worries.
Uh, towards the back of our property, there is...
We're not as mean as we look.
Oh, I know, I just, my hands are shaking, so I'm just trying to get this to go straight. But back here, there is a drainage into the sewage system, or septic system, or not septic, the water drainage from like the front of our road drains out and opens up into the back of our property right there. But we have, we are wondering how that's gonna work and everything, along with, we just don't want like an industrial site right there. Because we like the woods, we like that type of thing, and we're afraid that it's gonna get too loud, and we already have problems with, because of the, uh, like, the Augusta sportswear down the road, we have problems with, already had problems with trucks and stuff trying to turn down our road just to use it as a turnaround, and if we have an industrial site like that there, it's gonna cause a problem where they're gonna try to think that there's an entrance there at the back, and they've already pulled down our power lines twice because of this, since I've been there.
What kind of buffer do you have now between that property and you?
Hmm?
What kind of buffer do you have now between this property and you?
We are literally right at the back of it, like, that, that site right there is ours, right at the back of the property.
Oh, there's no buffer between the two of you?
No.
Thank you, sir, we may ask you to come back up.[1748.81]
Sir, thank you.
Would you spell your last name for us, just in case? These proceedings are recorded. I wanna make sure they get that right for the record.
Oh, you're fine. Uh, it's Echo Papa Pa Alpha Romeo Delta Sierra.
Thank you, sir. And we thank you for your service. Mr. Bennett, would you mind coming back up and addressing the drainage issues and the buffer issues here?
Um, as far as drainage is concerned, this site will actually drain in two different directions. Uh, we'll have a drainage, let's see if I can get this thing. We'll have a drainage outfall there, and there will be a drainage outfall there in the rear. Um, per county code, we will have to, uh, discharge at or below the existing pre, uh, pre-developed flows, so we cannot increase the flows. So there's one, that shouldn't be a problem as far as drainage goes, and we will try to tie this into a pipe system if at all possible. So it won't be overly inflow, uh, anyway. So we'll get into a pipe system and through, so you'll never even see it. Uh, but we'll have to get the proper easements and everything in order to make that happen. That's, that, but that is the intent of the owner.
Do you think this will help address the drainage problem, gentlemen?
For sure. Yeah. Cause it, we're gonna have to bring it up to standard. Right now, if it's not up to standard, we're gonna have to bring it up to standard in order to get the proper permits.
Okay.
Uh, as far as buffer goes, uh, there is what, a forty-foot we have to have on the rear now. Um, and not only is there gonna be a forty-foot buffer, we're also gonna have the stormwater facility on the other side of that. So you're gonna have forty-foot of a structural vegetative buffer. Then you're gonna have another fifty, sixty foot of, of stormwater facility and fenced in pond. And then you'll have your sites built in behind that. So effectively, you're gonna have a hundred-foot buffer between their property line and the furthest, or the closest property line from any of the subdivided lots.
What kind of internal lighting are y'all planning on this?
Haven't even thought that far ahead. We, we would, we'll look, more likely limit any internal lighting to the street. And then whatever, um, someone comes in to build, um, they'll be subject to whatever the, the codes require.
What, what is the, and, and concern about the trucks turning around? Um, do we have a better out view?
They're coming in here.
So they're, they're coming down Wrightsboro and they're turning up Old Wheeler?
They're just taking a wrong turn into your subdivision? Is that what happens?
Realize it, and then that's the first place to turn.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ two zero zero six zero three, rezoning from R one and M one to M one at forty-four fifty-nine Wrightsboro Road.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Mr. Butler filed RZ two zero zero six zero four. RA to S one.
Yep. It's crossed at five one five four White Oak Road, going from RA to S one for an event venue and also RA uses. It's a forty-seven point four three acres. Shows the location of the property on the south side of White Oak Road. And also, the zoning, everything around it is zoned RA. And early to the site, you can see the existing barn here, we're talking about quite a bit. And the existing site, that shows the entrance off White Oak and also the barn itself and the plat of the property. So the request is, uh, for the barn, uh, that, that'll be the main event center. Um, again, event venue for weddings and what have you. Uh, it'd operate from seven AM to eleven PM. Um, currently, the, the narrative has it, um, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Uh, we do have a condition that kinda alters that, that we spoke with the applicant after everything went out, um, with some other issues with the barn itself. We'll be getting to it here in a moment. Uh, there are several colleges shown on site. I have here, here and here. And then also equipment storage. Again, this is, is planned to, planned to maintain this as a, as having RA uses on the site. Uh, there will be a parking, uh, parking, um, a parking lot added here and, and also the pavilion as well. So in terms of the, the building itself, it shows the existing barn. It was built back in twenty sixteen, um, actually back in nineteen ninety. It's the rezones S one for basically the same thing, an events venue. Uh, with, they, they then rezoned it back to RA in twenty sixteen, I believe, as well. And then now we're coming back to, to change it back to what it was before. Again, the, the existing barn is shown here, uh, fairly large. It's about six four hundred square feet. Uh, there was some discussion on Tuesday about kinda how to retrofit this barn into a commercial use. Uh, one of those, one, one of the issues with that, um, is a condition that's gonna limit the amount of people to two hundred on the site. Uh, they could actually have much more than that. Um, but, you know, the limitation on it will actually help them from a building code standpoint. Uh, in terms of, uh, and this shows the existing barn, more of a close-up of it. In terms of future land use, uh, again, we're going back something that was there before. Uh, you also have the location of the barn itself and the hours of operation. Um, it is within the, the county, uh, noise ordinance. And also, it's located, and I believe it's nearly three hundred feet away from anything else, uh, or the adjacent property line itself. Again, you're even further, uh, from nearby properties. So in terms of all of that, SAP does recommend approval with the following conditions. Uh, we have, again, the gravel's acceptable for the parking lot. Uh, we do have a site plan required for that, but again, we're not, it's not gonna be a formal, like what we see out, you know, out front here. Um, they're gonna be required to meet the tree and shrub planting rate. Uh, they don't want to have, you know, the islands and all that. It's more maintaining a, a rural look to it. Uh, the buffer itself, like you probably saw in the previous pictures, it's, it's pretty heavily wooded. Uh, the condition here is that we'll, we'll evaluate it at, at site plan. Still isn't anything needs to be added to it. We're thinking probably not, but again, it's one of those, we'd like to be able to have that ability, um, you know, at the time of site plan review. Uh, in terms of the events, uh, the one thing that was added, you know, we talked about Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Uh, but then again, if there's a holiday such as a Christmas or similar, falls within the week, the events may occur on that day. Event prep may occur Sunday, Saturday. And also, the added condition for maximum occupancy of the site is two hundred people. That includes staff recommendation.
And the, the limitation on the occupancy is based on the restroom facilities available?
That was part of it. Uh, there is some other things as well, but it was, that was, but one of the main drivers was that.
Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come up and give us, uh, any additional information? All right. We know who you are, but, but please give us your name and home address.
Christian Wall, four oh four Abritway Evans.
What, uh, can you kinda give us a, an idea of how this came about and what direction you wanna go with it?
So Kyle O'Neil, my owner back here, is a good friend. I've dealt, done several projects for him. We built this barn three years ago, and it turned out fantastic. And so now you've got a lot of friends and family and church members. You know, we've had a couple little small church things there and men's group cook stuff. And it's like, well, maybe we should rent this out. And so I said, you probably oughta go ahead and get it done right, make sure we don't get any kind of trouble. So that's why we're going through the process, get it zoned back to S one, and he can rent it out and not have any kind of trouble. Or if we wanna have a hundred and fifty people there for a church function on assembly.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
I was gonna say, the, the question came up before our meeting. Number of people under because of restrooms?
That was what we found.
But we don't know that, that you couldn't bring a portable in and add capacity?
You could add...
Cause you could seat, I understand you could seat up to four hundred.
Right. We, we can seat a, a lot more. If you break the three hundred threshold, you have to go to fire sprinklers and a lot more.
Have to sprinkle.
Drama. We threw the number two hundred out there. The architect, even today, said, "You need to go ahead and try to get it up to two ninety-nine, just so you're not canonizing this idea that you can't have more than two hundred." If we go over two hundred, the parking lot gets bigger. I think the restrooms will still probably be fine. I think you can get up to about two fifty. I don't wanna rock the boat if we need to leave it at two hundred, but probably go as high as two ninety-nine and still be fine with everything. That, not trying to rock the boat this late in the game.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on RZ twenty dash oh six dash oh four, rezon from RA to S one special with, uh, conditions.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. And our last item on the agenda tonight, Ms. Boltie filed VA two zero zero six zero one. I believe, uh, the request is to withdraw, and this was dealt with administratively, but we still have to conduct the public hearing.
Correct. Yes, sir. This is, um, the variance that was associated to the minor waiver we heard at the beginning of the meeting for two twenty-nine Maywood Drive. Uh, the property's located in, uh, older neighborhood in Martiness off Flowing Wells Road. It's currently zoned R three, single-family residential. Um, and this is the aerial of the site with the existing house. Um, it is kind of set in catty corner on the lots, not straight. That did complicate their plans to put an addition on it. Um, this was the site plan. Um, again, this is the one that the minimum building line was noted, um, incorrectly on the plat. Uh, so when she brought the application in, it looked like it would be a variance request. Um, as we dug into what that sixty-foot right-of-way on Tom and Drive was, realized that it was actually a, a minor waiver application could cover her request. This site plan showing their proposed addition on the house and the street view of the existing house. Um, and again, uh, this has already been approved as a minor waiver, so staff recommends withdrawing the variance request.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, the withdrawal of the request, deny the revol, the, uh, request to withdraw or table the request.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. West, with the withdrawal for VA twenty oh six...
To approve.
Let them redraw.
To allow, to approve their, their request to withdraw. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to allow the withdrawal passes five zero. Uh, we have no text amendments? We have no legal matters? Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Seeing none. Um, I would like to thank you all for putting up with us with our social distancing tonight. It's kinda unusual to be spread out in a meeting like this. Uh, we, we're lucky we didn't have many, many, uh, things on the agenda tonight that might draw a crowd. Uh, do we have a public or, or, uh, comments? Anything on the agenda tonight or anything else you'd like to address? All right. That being said, gentlemen, I believe the time for adjournment is upon us. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes five zero at seven oh one PM. The next meeting is June eighteenth at six PM in these chambers. Thank you.